Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 23rd, 2024 Meeting of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. I can ask everyone to please take a moment and silence their cell phones and please note that this is in fact being recorded by FCTV. If there's any private party who is going to record this hearing, I would just ask you to step forward, identify yourself now, and let us know that you're recording. Good evening.
I'm Taylor with the Enterprise.
The Enterprise. Is there anybody else who's planning on recording this proceeding? Change your mind, just please just come up to the podium and let us know that you'll be recording. I'd like to start by introducing members of the board, starting at the audience's far left is Frank Duffy, he is a full-voting member. Mark Fineran, he is a full-voting member. My name is James Morse, I'm a full-voting member. Suzanne Murphy, who is a full-voting member and our clerk, and we have Tony Petrucci, who is an associate member. We're also joined this evening by Noreen Stockman, our zoning administrator, and Ashley DeMello, who is our recording secretary. The Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes as well as the town zoning bylaws in reviewing and voting on applications. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public and to allow full and fair discussion of a project prior to closing the hearing and reaching a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement from the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. The applicant or the applicant's representatives will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation. Time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant. Next, the public will be invited to comment. Public comment should be directed only at the project and conclude an opinion in favor or opposition or to ask a question about the project. Comments should be limited to two minutes. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time if comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair and should come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. Please note that the microphone does not amplify your voice but is provided for the benefit of FCTV viewers. The board may continue the hearing to a future date and time. Otherwise, when the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented to make a decision, the hearing will be closed. Once the hearing is closed, no more testimony will be taken. The board will then discuss the proposal amongst themselves and make a motion to approve or deny the application. The motion will be followed by a summary of key findings and conditions. The supermajority vote of four members is required on the approval of special permits and variances. Any Zoning Board of Appeals decision may be appealed, as provided for in Mass. General Law Chapter 40A or B. On this evening's agenda, first up, we have public comment. This public comment is reserved for anything that is not specifically on tonight's agenda. Does any member of the public wish to make a comment about anything not specifically on this evening's agenda? We'll be taking a few things out of order this evening. Under new hearings, starting with 03624, Staten Now Trustees of 53 Childs River Road, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to allow a pool exceeding 20% lot coverage by structures. We have had a request for a withdrawal. Is there a motion to allow withdrawal without prejudice?
A move.
Mr. Duffy, a move. Is there a second?
Second.
That's Mr. Fineran. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Application is withdrawn without prejudice. Under new hearings, 03424, Sarawick Gray, 53 North Falmouth Highway, North Falmouth, requesting a special permit to construct an attached garage exceeding 900 feet in size. We have a request to continue to June 6th of 2024. Is that correct, Noreen, June 6th? Is there a motion to allow a continuance to June 6th?
So moved.
Fineran, second. Suzanne, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That matter is off list, continue to June the 6th. Return to continuations. Oh, I'm sorry. 01424, Pier 196 Mettoxet Road, Wacoit, requesting special permit to raise the existing dwelling, demolish a portion of the existing dwelling, construct additions, and relocate the existing detached structure and shed.
We're doing that one? I thought we were doing new ones.
That's a continuation. And while you're getting ready, one of our vice chairman is absent this evening. I will appoint Tony to be a voting member on this hearing.
All right, let me get my stuff out. I thought we were doing the new ones. I'm sorry.
My apologies.
Too long?
01424.
Mettoxet.
Mettoxet Road.
The one we had a couple of months ago.
Oh, yeah. We're gonna do the last one last time.
Yes.
All right, we have Nathan K. Pieri, 196 Mettoxet Road, Wacoit, Mass., applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Section 240-102A and 240-11 4A-1I of the Code of Falmouth to raise the existing dwelling, demolish a portion of the existing dwelling, and construct additions, and relocate the existing detached structure and shed. Let's see what we have from town boards. Fire Department has no comment. Assessors have no comment. Planning has no comment. Building Department has not much. Engineering. This application was reviewed for impacts to public rights away and public utilities. Mettoxet Road is a public right-of-way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right-of-way. Any changes within the right-of-way would require filing a permit with the Engineering Division. Any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abutters, or public rights away. Four, drywells are proposed for the roof, as we typically recommend. And five, where this project falls under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, we defer to the Conservation Commission for stormwater management and construction erosion controls. That was engineering. Then we have a conservation whole decision is in here. Let's see, we have Water Department. If the detached structures need town water, they will need an independent water service from the water main to the structure. The Health Department says approved design flow capacity for the existing septic is for six bedrooms. The plan shows six bedrooms, so health has no issues. And then the rest is the Conservation Commission. And that's what we have.
Representative for the applicant, good evening.
Good evening. So for the record, my name is Nathan Pieri of 196 Mettoxet, representing myself. So what we see here is the current house. It's a 1940's Cape, the main structure that you see here. And the structure you see in the back is the butler's quarters from back in the 40's. And that's also referred to as the detached structure in the plan. In terms of existing conditions, you can see here where the property is located, on the Munichus River in Gold. It's an existing six-bedroom, four-bath house. It's cited on three acres, zoned, single residence A. It's very close to the coastal bank. It's within 10 feet, and it's presently in a VE-13 flood zone. Existing building height is 23 feet, and existing lot coverage by structures is 3.1%, because it's such a large lot. So in terms of project details, our intent is to try to keep the character of the house by saving the original house. To do that, we're going to demo the deck and the 1990's addition. We're gonna move today with the butler's quarters, we're gonna move it out of Zone A, presently behind the current shed, which you see here, this particular move. And then we are going to lift the main house and replace the foundation with a pure foundation. And that will help us then to conform with the flood zone requirements. Once the main house is put back down and there's pure foundations for both the new deck and the new addition, we'll commence construction on those additions. You can see here where the butler's quarters will be relocated behind that shed, just outside of Conservation Zone A and B. Setbacks are all greater than 160 feet. And this shed will be located behind the detached garage that we just finished construction. So you can see here, the location of the shed behind that garage will be greater than 40 feet from any property line or setback. The shed is also outside of Conservation Control in its present location. So in terms of project details, the addition that we're building is about 2,000 square feet. You know, the lines here are a little hard to see, but you can see the dark black line is the new construction. The red line is the current front face of the house that's, as you can see, right on the coastal bank. So we are in effect keeping the relative shape of the footprint but moving the house back off the coastal bank. We are not increasing the number of bedrooms. There still will be six bedrooms. We are adding a half bath on the first floor, other than same, you know, same number of bathrooms in each bedroom. The building height will be higher. The building height is higher given we're lifting the house two feet, about two and a half feet, a little less than that. And also, the, what you'll see is the addition is slightly higher than the old house, but noticeably so. Overall, lot coverage is conforming at 3.1%. Again, given we're on three acres. So we can see the front elevations that you had in your information packet and the rear elevations. I think what's instructive is to take a look at the proposed design as compared with the current structure. So you can see if the house that we're lifting and shifting is the same size. You can see that the addition follows the same general appearance of the house, except it's bigger. So the bedrooms are bigger, closets are bigger, and it's better flow within the house. The deck will have the addition of a screened-in porch, but other than that, the height again is less than 30 feet, which is less than 35 feet, which is permissible by law. Rear elevation, I think the, you know, the same concept. You can see where, again, just the overall dimensions of the house are slightly bigger, but it has a very similar look to the current structure, given that we're on three acres and we can't see any of our neighbors. There's no adverse impacts on adjacent properties in the neighborhood, and we've had no concerns raised by my neighbors, and I don't see anyone in the audience here this evening. So according to zoning bylaw, Section 240-10.2.A, we are looking for a special permit to change a non-conforming structure that is not substantially more adverse than the current structure. Some key points here, we're preserving the 1940's Cape. It's a consistent design for the addition. We're improving it with a pure foundation that lifts it out of the flood zone. We're moving off the coastal bank between four and a half and 10 and a half feet. The house is in the same relative position, so there's no adverse effects on neighbors. Again, the ridge height is six feet less than was permissible by law. Lot coverage has no dimensional nonconformity, and the addition is consistent with the average dimensions in the community. So just a quick visual, in terms of where we're moving off the bank, you can see relative shift in the house. So the green area is the space that's freed up by moving the house back and then lifting it on the pure foundation. And I did a quick neighborhood analysis, taking a look at some of the homes on Meadow Neck Road, which is right across the river from us, as well as some of my neighbors' homes here on Mettoxet. So you can see, on average, folks are on more than an acre of land and roughly 3,600 square feet in terms of house size. We're on, you know, more land, but roughly the same house size. We went through the referrals. I don't think there was anything in referrals. We got our order of conditions, they're ready to be filed. So I would ask the commission to find that the proposed addition is not substantially more detrimental than the current structure.
Questions for the board, start with you, Tony.
I don't have any questions, other than the ridge height, just want to confirm it's 27 feet, 11 inches, the new ridge height?
The ridge height is less than 29. It's 28 feet, 7 inches.
Less than 35 feet, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
I'm all set.
I have no questions. Mark?
Not much, actually. I mean, and I'm quite impressed with your garage that you were in front of us, or by your shed, or whatever you want to call it. You never see any kind of disturbance to that bank in front of your house whatsoever. You've been there for four years plus?
Yes.
Yeah. And if you go back to the picture, the, right there?
Yep.
If you can see, up past your house on the left is that part of the river, whatever that goes in, up higher, right across from where it says, right there. Of course, that acts as like a dampener anytime the... It's just interesting. What did you do for a living, if you don't mind me asking?
I'm still working, actually.
What do you do?
So I'm in software.
Oh. Because you're very good with this kind of hardware as well. And, no, I think you're doing a wonderful job in preserving as much of the old structure and the character is. It's commendable. I have absolutely no problem with this, and you got three-plus acres and nobody can see. Nobody even knows that that section of Mettoxet Road is there. We have another, had another one further down the road. I had never been there in the 712 years I've lived here. But no, very, I have no questions or concerns whatsoever, as long as you continue the way you have with the original project. I think you're doing a fine job.
Frank?
Yes. In reading your written submission, I don't think you identified the existing nonconformity, but in your presentation, you told us perhaps it's the coastal bank. Is that what you're relying on? You have to have a nonconformity in the structure in order to get a special permit, so...
That's right. So, you know, nowadays, you cannot build a house that close to the coastal bank.
Okay. So for the record, the coastal bank is the nonconformity. Okay, thank you.
Jerry?
No questions.
Public comment. Seeing none.
There was one question, sorry, from the building question. They were just asking if you knew what the butler's quarters were going to be once you moved them.
So it's for my rowboats. So I have skulls that will be stored in there like a boathouse.
So you're not connected to stuff?
No.
Not going to have an issue with a condition that not be used for residential purposes? Dwelling purposes, excuse me.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other follow-up questions?
I think that conforms with all our butler's quarters as well.
We need discussion on the application. All right. Is there a motion?
Motion or close.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor of closing, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion, excuse me, the hearing is closed, no more testimony will be taken. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to approve with conditions.
Motion to approve with conditions. Mr. Fineran, second. Suzanne? Findings.
Let's see what we have. Findings, it's in an RA zone, flood zone AE-11 and AE-13. There was one previous, Zoning Board of Appeals, it was us, last year. Lot size is three acres, .9. It's on a public road. Existing is, structure is 2.9, proposed is 3.5. The new height's going to be 29, six-bedroom, septic. Coastal bank is the nonconforming, as Frank just got. He's moving the foundation away from the coastal bank to 10.5. There is a comp sheet. I think that's all I have.
CONCOM has issued an order of conditions. Project is not more detrimental. Project will improve coastal resiliency by moving the structure away from existing coastal bank. The nonconformity will be improved by the project. No opposition in the file, none offered at the hearing.
Board of Health?
Board of Health, yeah, referral indicates the septic is adequate for existing six bedrooms. And, I think that's it. Anything else, Noreen? Conditions.
The water said detached structures, if they do need water, will need an independent service. All boards?
All board referrals, yep.
Butler?
Con to be used? CONCOM conditions.
All boards.
Butler's quarters not to be used for resident, dwelling purposes, excuse me.
Can I ask a question?
Court.
No pertinent. No water to the butler's quarters, which is now the skull quarters or whatever. Would that include a simple silcock or an outside hose, seeing how you would have no...
I think he said whole service, if I'm correct.
I don't think, we don't need to condition no water.
No, I think the question was whether it was going to be used for habitable purposes.
Yeah. I'm just curious where that...
Residential use, then they'd walk separate line.
Where that line splits.
If you want to split water and electric, I don't have a problem with it. I just want to make sure.
No, no, I have no problem with it. This guy doesn't, does some beautiful work out there.
Should we put that in that we have no objection to water and electric? I didn't have a chance to look at the plan, so I don't know if electric's already shown.
Why don't we just leave it blank? We're not restricting his access. If he wants to put it in, he just complies with, sort of the plumbing inspector or the building inspector.
It's just, it's under boards.
Right.
So I mean...
Must comply with board referrals.
Thank you, just for head of vacation.
I don't think we have to worry about, I don't think we have to worry about parking out there, so...
Not much. He's got like four cars.
Standard hours of work. I think that's about it. Anything else? All right. Anything else? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that's a vote. Thank you very much. All right, we'll go to new hearings. 3124 McDermott will be next.
All right, let's see what we got here.
Next, under new hearings, we're gonna have 03124 McDermott, 227 Alcott Road, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to raise and rebuild the existing nonconforming dwelling exceeding 20% lot coverage by structures. And on this hearing, I'm gonna appoint Jerry as a voting member.
Okay, we have Marie McDermott, 227 Alcott Road, East Falmouth, Mass., applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Section 240-113A-4 and 240-102A of the Code of Falmouth to raise, R-A-Z-E, and rebuild the existing nonconforming dwelling exceeding 20% lot coverage by the structures. The subject property is 227 Alcott Road. And from town boards, we have Water Department. Let's see what he wrote. The Water Department recommends updating the existing water service from 3/4 inch copper to 1 inch PE. Fire Department has no issues. Can it's building again? Let's see. Engineering. This application was reviewed for impacts to public rights away and public utilities. Alcott Road is a private right-of-way in this area. Any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abutters, or public rights away. Four, the plans indicate that roof leaders will be connected to drywells as we typically recommend. Five, we recommend the following condition be included. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence. Six, erosion controls as shown on the plan and appear to be adequate to protect abutting properties and the private right-of-way. We recommend the following condition be included in any approval. Quotations, "Construction of this project shall follow the town's soil and erosion sediment control standard conditions. Document can be found on the Engineering's Division page of the town website. References to the Town Department of Public Works Engineering Division shall be replaced as Zoning Board of Appeals. Pool be the permitting authority." That was engineering. Planning has no comment. Conservation has no comment. Scott McCann, Board of Health. "The existing home and proposed home shows three bedrooms. The proposed three-bedroom design does not, does appear, does appear, to meet Title V SEP pack. Health doesn't have any issues with the proposal other than to state that we will not sign on the building permit application until a septic installation permit is approved, which will require a full septic design at that time." And that's what we have.
For the applicant, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Jonathan Pallone of Senne Associates. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Marie McDermott, who is here in the audience this evening. She is the owner of the property at 227 Alcott Road, which is shown as Lot 42 on the site plan. This property is located in the RB District. The lot, as you can see, has 11,316 square feet of area. The existing house, it's currently approved with an existing house that was built in the 70's, which if you've been out, you can probably tell, some of the materials that were used kind of date to that time. It has a rear deck on the back and a rear porch and an attached garage, which is on the southerly part of the house. It's currently conforming to all setbacks except the front yard setback. And I'll address that more in a bit, but as you can see on the plan, the front yard is here on Alcott Road. That's where the paved drive comes in. And the current dimension is 24.2, so it's just under the 25% required, but that's the nonconformity in the front yard setback. It gets its access off of this unimproved right-of-way, which is owned by the homeowners We are working together with the homeowners association to permit some things that are happening there, but they are generally supportive of everything that's happening right now. We are seeking tonight for a special permit under Section 240-11.3A, Part 4, to exceed the lot coverage of 20%. And we're also seeking a finding under Section 240-10.2A of no substantial detriment based on that pre-existing nonconformity. So our proposal here is to raise and rebuild, demolish the existing structure, but retain the existing footprint of the foundation. We're gonna add on to that frost walls that will match the outside footprint and build up from there. We're also going to add a second floor, and there's gonna be two bedrooms on the second floor. The second floor is just limited to that one area that covers the existing garage and the back porch right now. The second floor is going to increase height up to 26 feet, 1 inch. And the lot coverage by structures as proposed, oh, there's the height there. The lot coverage by structures as proposed is going to increase the square footage from 2,215 square feet up to 28.05 square feet, which will leave, result in a 24.8% lot So to just address the standards for increasing over 20%, I think we meet all the requirements here under the bylaw. It's well within the size and height of the neighborhood, as demonstrated in the lot coverage analysis that was included with the application. There's no shadow effect. There's one property that's to the south of here. There isn't, it's the side that it's closest to. There's not going to be any effect to the north. There's not going to be any impact on public ways. And there, no increase in bedrooms, so there's no net impact on nitrogen to embayments. Secondly, for the increase in the front setback, we also believe we meet the requirements, the required findings for that as well. Here, the nature and purpose is the same. This is just extending the roof line out of the existing building. There's no change being proposed. It's the same quality and character as it presently exists, and it's no, there's no change in the effect on the neighborhood. And this is kind of emphasized by the fact that the paper street that is on this side provides ample buffer to any other neighboring properties. So I think that based on those findings, we think we meet the requirements for a special permit in this regard, and happy to take any questions.
Board questions, start with you, Jerry.
No questions, thank you.
Frank?
No.
Mark?
I had a question, just an observation. Who did the survey here?
David Martin.
And where's he from?
He's from Woods Hole.
Because on your lot corners, you have PROP period, and we generally have that as proposed, and we like to indicate lot corner on the stakes, but the placement is fine. But, I mean, it was kind of confusing at first, but I do get out of the car and walk around. And the only other thing...
Are you talking about the stakes?
Yeah, the lot corners are, instead of being marked lot corner, they're marked PROP period corner, which generally we use that. Corner, which generally we use that as proposed.
Gotcha.
But it was confusing only for a minute. And other than that, it's a nice, nice improvement. I was curious as to, what is the association clearing out that paper street there in the front? All the trees were down?
No, that, that's something that we undertook in connection, the association was aware that that was happening. I think it's just going to improve access to the property for equipment to get in there. There were some trees that you may have noticed were rotted out in the middle and needed to be gone anyway. Taken down, so.
Overall, it's certainly an improvement and a bonus to the, the only other thing I want to point out is that you're encroaching about six feet on your neighbor to the south with the fence. But that's not our-
I think that's the neighbor's fence, but-
Oh, well, they left you plenty of room to maintain it then, or left themselves plenty of room.
They submitted a letter in favor of the project, so they're-
No, it's, it's nice and obviously it needed to be done. Some of those properties are dated.
Yeah.
Nothing else?
You're going to 24, 24.8% lot coverage. Is there going to be any plan to add a shed later on?
No.
I just, I always get a little concerned when we see these going out to the maximum permissible lot coverage that there's a slow creep up towards or beyond 25%, so just want to make sure that if there's anything proposed later on, that they need to be aware, that they need to come back or if they're going to have to reduce something.
Yeah, I mean, I think she hears that.
Just go up to the microphone, please, ma'am. Thank you.
Well, I think I can, I can address it too. I mean, if I don't do a good job, you can jump up here. But most, as you can see, most of this project is following existing footprint. I think the only expansion is over the entryway, where it's all coming out in one line, and then the addition at the bottom. So that, that bump out is going to be a garage. So storage space is going to-
Looks like a very, I'm not opposed. I just, a little, the tale of caution is all.
Yeah.
Would you be adverse to a condition of no sheds?
I mean, I don't think it's necessary, but I don't think her plant, do you want to?
Have to be a pretty small shed anyway to get-
It would. It would be a pretty small shed if there ever were a-
Just make it easier for everybody.
Suzanne?
I failed to mention that there was a letter of approval in the file, and I, other than that, I have no questions.
Tony?
Just a quick question. The paper street, that's a private way owned by the community?
Yes.
Out of curiosity, how do you get legal frontage on a paper street?
Go into the center line.
Go into the center line. Thank you.
I mean, you could improve it and you could pave it, and then maybe that's what you're talking about, that it's actually improved access, but in general-
Nowhere.
The fact that you have a legal right to do that, I think, is enough.
Okay, thank you.
Any follow-up questions? Public comment? Seeing none. How would the board like to see?
Motion closed.
Motion closed. Suzanne, is there a second?
Second.
Mark, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing is closed. No more testimony will be taken. How would the board like to proceed? Do we need discussion?
Motion approved with condition.
Motion approved with condition by Jerry. Is there a second?
Certainly.
Second to Mark. Findings?
Findings. It's in an RB zone. It's in the Green Pond Coastal Pond overlay. The lot size is eleven thousand three hundred and sixteen. It's on a private road. Existing is nineteen point six over twenty-two point eight, and proposed is 24.8 over 27.69. When I read the plans, I couldn't see the height, but I thought he just said 26.
Twenty-six one.
Twenty-six one, thank you. Has a new septic. There's a comp sheet, one letter in favor. And that's about all I have.
Existing three-bedroom home constructed in the 1970s. Request is to raise and rebuild. Septic plans per the Board of Health referral to be filed. Plan is to rebuild on the existing footprint. Improvements, raise and reconstruct will offer numerous improvements, including adherence to the stretch energy code, not more detrimental. No bedroom increase, no nitrogen increase, no effects on shade, no opposition offered at the hearing, one letter in support, and testimony from the applicant's attorney that the HOA is supportive of the project. Any other findings? Conditions?
For plans?
For plans?
Like Mark said, no sheds.
Yeah, I think that's-
It would be, you wouldn't even put a door on it.
Yeah, like a 12-foot shed.
We'll incorporate all-town referrals, sediment and erosion controls, numbering of structures, standard hours of work, remain three bedrooms. I was going to propose no additional lot coverage or, but no sheds, that's fine.
Additional lot coverage may be better. It might subsume the shed.
It's no additional lot coverage.
No additional structure.
Lot coverage. Any additional conditions, Marie?
I would recommend the lot coverage certification, just to make sure it doesn't exist.
That's reasonable, given that we're going up to the, out to the maximum, so. Anything else? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, that's a vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great. Last, under new hearings, zero-three-two-two-four Parent, thirty-nine Maers Pond Drive, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to remove the existing deck, construct an addition in its place, and construct a front porch addition.
Okay, we have Mark and Kelly Parent, thirty-nine Maers Pond Drive, East Falmouth Mast, applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two-forty-ten-two-a-one, the code of Falmouth, to remove the existing deck, construct an addition in its place, and construct a front porch addition. Property is thirty-nine Maers Pond Drive, East Falmouth. Then from town boards, we have Water. "Please be aware that your water service will be under the front porch and not accessible. I would advise to sleeve the existing water service from the foundation to a location accessible outside the front porch footings in case there is a future repair needed." Board of Health has no issues. Assessors have no issues. Let's see. Engineering. "This application was reviewed for impacts to public rights-of-way and public utilities. Maers Pond Drive is a private right-of-way in this area. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abudders, or public rights-of-way. Four, we recommend that the board add a condition that requires the addition of drywells, rain garden, or other stormwater infiltration measures, or stormwater harvesting measures such as rain barrels for a new roof area at a minimum. Five, where this site slopes down to the street, we recommend that erosion and sediment controls are included for this project to protect the abutting right-of-way. We recommend that the plans be revised to include a demarcated limit of work and include proposed erosion and sediment controls. And we recommend the following condition be included. Quotations, "Construction of this project shall follow the town's soil, erosion, and sediment control standard conditions. Document can be found on the engineering division's page of the town website. References to the Department of Public Works Engineering Division shall be replaced with zoning board of appeals, who will be the permitting authority." That was engineering. Planning had no comment. Concom had no comment, and we, and we have no letters. We're good.
For the applicant, good evening.
Frank, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Barry R. Krimmons, here on behalf of the applicants, Mr. Mark and Kelly Parent, who are seated in the third row. Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm a little more low-tech than the, than the prior applicants, so I trust that is okay. I believe the members should all have copies of the plans in the materials that we submitted, and hopefully that, that will suffice. I don't know if you'd be able to see on the screen anyways where the, where the proposed addition is going, so I think the plans might be a better reference point in, in any event. So if, if that is okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll proceed. What the parents are proposing are two things. As you look at their house, they have a, an open deck to the left of the house that is being removed and is being replaced with a 12-by-15 addition that is going to serve as their dining area. That addition is fully compliant. The non-conformity with the property relates to the fact, this property comes out of a subdivision that was created in 1970, and I included the original subdivision plan in my materials. And according to the subdivision plan, the lot is approximately 16,000 square feet. The site plan that was submitted has a different lot area, but still, in, under either event, well under the 20, 45,000 square foot current minimum lot area. The house was built in approximately 1985, but again, as a, as a pre-existing non-conforming lot, that was what allowed the, the original builder to be able to build a house on, on that smaller-sized lot. My clients purchased the property, ironically, exactly two years ago today, May 23rd of 2022. However, Mr. Parent is actually a fourth-generation Falmouthite, although they only bought the property two years ago. The other addition that's being proposed is a front porch that will run the length of the house. If you notice from the plan, and because of the orientation of the house being slightly at an angle, and if you look at the front yard setback line, currently, the house, the corner of the house complies with the addition of the porch. There's a small section in the left-hand corner of the porch, as you look at it, that encroaches into that front yard setback. It encroaches in by approximately six feet. So the setback would be about 19 feet. The, the property is situated such that it's up on a rise and over, you know, it's on the, it's on the opposite side of Maers Pond Drive as the pond. So no one in the area is going to be affected by the addition of, of the porch. In fact, query whether anyone would actually even see the porch from the street because of the elevation of, of the house relative to the street. It's, it's considerably higher than the street level. However, it does, it does encroach into that front yard setback in that left-hand corner. As you continue down along the length of the house, it is, it is outside of the setback. So the majority of the porch will actually comply, but this one section, the corner, does encroach into the front yard setback. So, so we are requesting a special permit under section two-forty-dash-ten-point-two-a-one of the zoning bylaw in that there'd be no substantial detriment to the neighborhood greater than, than the existing non-conformity. So respectfully, it complies with the standards under the bylaw. It, it complies similarly with the standards under the state statute, Chapter 48, Section 6. And with that, Mr. Chairman, it's, it's a fairly straightforward request, I believe, so I don't want to, I don't want to belabor things. I think I'd rather save my time and respond to any questions that the members may have.
Board questions, and if I didn't announce, I'll be appointing Tony as the voting member on this one. I'll start with you, Tony. Questions?
I think it fits in very well into the neighborhood. The only concern is the encroachment on that front left corner into the setback. Other than that, I have no problem with the project.
Suzanne? I have no questions.
No, I'm not concerned with the encroachment. It's actually a porch. It's not living space. And kind of mimics houses in the past with a porch up front. You're going to find that that house is going to be much cooler in the summer with that porch. It's, it's perfect. I mean, it's nice.
Thank you.
And other than that, I have no concerns.
Thank you.
Good project.
Thank you.
Frank?
Mr. Krimmons, the section of the bylaw that you cited is section two-forty-ten-point-two-a, which says that a pre-existing non-conforming structure or use may be extended, blah, 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 by special permit. And you also gave us in your written submission a quote from Chapter 48, Section 6 of the, of the general laws, which is the zoning bylaw, and again, it talks about a pre-existing non-conforming structure or use may be extended or altered by a special permit. But you've identified in your remarks that your non-conformity is the lot size. So I question whether you even can apply for what you're asking for because there is no mention of pre, of non-conforming lots in either section two-forty-ten-point-two-a or forty-eight-six. I think, in, in response through you, Mr. Chairman, I think the, the case law on this point has said that, that the statute was intended to include lots when it said structures and uses. The legislature in its wisdom has not seen fit to amend that provision, but the, the case law is consistent that that provision is intended to be read as including non-conforming lots in addition to non-conforming uses and structures. Well, that's contrary to what it says, and you didn't cite any case law in your memorandum. So the way I look at this, you're not entitled to what you're asking for. You're asking essentially for a variance, and you'd have to amend your application before you'd have my vote.
Jerry?
I, I concur with Frank. I wish we had the case law in front of us that we could have referred to counsel or reviewed ourselves. But other than that-
The board like to-
I think it's pretty clear that there's no mention of lots whatsoever in anything cited. Even in his own memorandum, he doesn't mention, he mentions lots, but the, the bylaw that he quotes and the statute he quotes does not contain the word lots. So I think we need some more information on this.
Would you like a request for an extension to send us a little bit more legal information as to your position?
Sure, I'd be happy to. When would we be looking at continuing? Did I hear June 6th in relation to another case?
We have a fairly robust schedule due to three 40Bs pending on our normal caseload, but-
I don't think I'd want to be here that night then anyways.
June 27th?
June 27th. And-
Do we want a request from our own town council regarding this issue?
I would think it'd be appropriate.
Let's see what he submits.
All right. Fair enough. So our motion to continue to June 27th.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Before we, actually, before we continue, is there anyone here from the public who'd like to comment on this project before we move on? Seeing none. Okay. Continue to June 27th. Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Sure. We're going to take a five-minute recess before we get into 5:45 Main Street. And we thank everyone for their patience this evening.
August 20th, August 25th, right around there. You know, I think that that's someone who wouldn't be able to take advantage of this if if there was a 90-day minimum. So I'd prefer to see it stay at 60.
Parking has been expressed, lack of parking. Are you going to come up with some type of, how are you going to distribute parking between market rate versus affordable units?
So what we're proposing is 81 total parking spaces, 57 on-site, 24 on the abutting property. Under the parking guidelines, we're required to have one spot per Mr. Cod unit. We extended that same requirement to the SRO units. So that's a requirement of 67. We have 24, we have 24 cafe seats, which requires 12 parking. So that's a total of 79 required parking. We're proposing 81. And that's before you take into account the ride-sharing and car-reduction programs that are onsite.
Are you agreeable if we approve this to a condition that units that do not have parking, very clearly in your lease terms, are going to indicate that? Are you agreeable to a condition that the landlord is going to have to put out some form of reasonable rules to ensure quiet enjoyment, not just of other residents, but of the neighbors?
I mean, you know, we're subject to the same rules and guidelines that the entire town is subject to, but we're willing to go a step beyond that to make sure that there are quiet hours within the building. And there is someone onsite 24 hours.
It was going to be, okay, so your plan is to have an employee on the desk, so to speak, 24/7?
Yes.
Are you prepared to either give the board or the zoning administrator either recorded or recordable documents to ensure that these units stay affordable?
Yeah, for the SHI units, absolutely. Though I think that's going to be a requirement of getting on SHI list anyways. If it's a condition that all 30 of those units are SHI-eligible, we'll do whatever's needed to do so. And I would say it should be a condition of this decision that those 30 Mr. Cod units be SHI-eligible. And if we can't qualify them, then we're not going to be able to move forward. Tony?
Well, I think it's the right project. I just think it's trying to fit into a flawed bylaw. As I understand this, you're asking this board to squint their eyes very tightly and find something that's going to fit under 245.1C, Paragraph 2. Now, Mr. Cod defined subsidized housing units. That's not a problem. But there's no definition for single-room occupancy or short-term workforce housing. So therefore, how can it be prohibited? It's not prohibited anywhere within the bylaw. It's not even defined within the bylaw. So how is it a prohibited use?
So...
It can be applied under 245.1C.
So I'm happy to address that. The bylaws, 5.1C-1 says, "Uses not listed within Section 246.1 through 6.7, which are the various zoning districts in town. Under any use category itemized, the applicable zoning districts are prohibited." So if it's not listed, it's therefore prohibited.
So the assumption is not listed and it's prohibited?
And then the next section says, "However, a prohibited use under 5.1C-1 may be allowed by special permit if the board determines that it closely resembles, in its neighborhood impacts, a use allowed by right or by special permit in that zoning district."
What does single-room occupancy, short-term workforce resemble for the neighborhood?
I think it resembles a nursing home. I think it resembles commercial accommodations in some ways, although we're extending our length of stay so as to not come within that jurisdiction. The time that we've used, this is a section of the bylaw that doesn't get used very often. Breweries, when breweries started coming to town, that's how we permitted these, because they weren't specifically listed anywhere else. So, you know, this is a use that doesn't exist, but there is a need for. And because it's not otherwise listed somewhere in the bylaw, it's therefore considered prohibited, but can be allowed by special permit.
Thank you.
Suzanne?
Is there any interest in not having a restaurant to cut down on the parking and the traffic?
So, the restaurant is part of what the mixed-use is. So the Mr. Cod requires mixed-use. So we have the cafe, we have the short-term housing, and we have the SHI units. We have enough parking to accommodate everything. We do. And that's before you take into account the ride-sharing programs and the car-reduction programs that are onsite. So we have enough, we have enough...
Including the employees in the restaurant?
So the requirement under the bylaw is per number of seats, and that takes into account employees. There's no, it's not, it's not number of employees plus number of seats. It's just, the requirement for a restaurant is based on the number of seats. It's one car for every two seats.
Mark?
Mixed use is an attempt to mimic old downtown America with a business on the first floor and then a 2 and 3 and maybe a 4-story walk-up. What you're doing here is, you're mixing your mixed-use. You're mixing residential, commercial, and more residential. And I say that was never the intention. And as Frank once instructed me, and, well, I picked up on it, he was actually giving it to somebody else, that the bylaws, just because the bylaw doesn't say that you can't do it, that's not sufficient. It must say that you can do it. And I know how much you like math. I got some math for you here. And I'd like to say also, before we get into this, that you're counting the land twice, which absolutely should not be allowed. The planning board put forward their Mr. Cod bylaw, and it was passed by town meeting, but we're all aware that it was flawed. It was supposed to go back this spring, but they don't have, didn't have adequate time to address and write this bylaw correctly. And the one thing I am thankful for is, by November, when it does go in front of town meeting again, at least the skeleton will be up at the Fay property, and people can see what 4- and 5-story buildings 20 feet from the sidewalk on Main Street are going to look like. And I think it might change their decision. But regardless, simply, Mr. Cod allows 20 units per acre. And there's 43,560 feet in an acre. So that's 2,178 feet per unit. You disagree with that?
All right, we'll take your word on it, Mr. Fenner.
All right. And so if you divide, and this property was actually, initially, some of the numbers where it was 1.69 units, which was brought forward a few times, and that's when the building commissioner did his box, he used the 1.69. I don't know where that came from, but the property is actually 1.54 acres. So if you multiply 20 units per acre by 1.54, you come up with 30.8. And you're asking for 30 Mr. Cod units, which is proper. That leaves you 1,742 square feet of land left. And on that 1,742 square feet of land, you're asking for 37 units? Is that correct? Well, you're asking for 37 other units beyond the 30.
Well, we're not proposing units. We're proposing short-term workforce housing.
Yeah, what, 37?
But that's...
Is the 37 number correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's on 1,742 square feet. And you know, there's bylaws that address this. So if you take 1 acre, 43,560, you divide it by 1,742. 1,742 goes into an acre 25 times. So you're asking for 25 times 37, which amounts to 950 units per acre. This whole project and Mr. Cod are due to go back in front of town meeting in November. You're asking us to do something that we by no means have the power to do. This is town meeting and the planning board. The planning board and town meeting raised from 6 units an acre to 20 units an acre to address the housing problem we have in this town. By no means did town meeting intend for you to put 950 units per acre. And I think that anyone on this board who votes this thing positive is exaggerating their abilities by a factor of 45. This is just, absolutely, it's a contrivance. I certainly can't vote for this. And I think that, in the end, probably going to be quite sorry if this thing passes. This is town meeting's job. This thing needs to be put off until town meeting properly addresses the Mr. Cod. Mr. Cod allows for 20 units per acre plus, and as well, it allows for 4- and 5-story buildings. They just don't jive. If you're going to put 20 units an acre in 4- and 5-story buildings, you're talking about having to construct 7- and 8-bedroom units. I mean, the math just doesn't work here. And I don't think that anyone has a right to vote for this in a positive fashion. That's all I have to say.
Right, questions?
Well, let me just start by making a comment. And I'd like to echo your comment, Mr. Flauer, about the, I really appreciate, I think the board appreciates the fact that you got together with some of the town staff, the building commissioner, the town planner, the town council, and a special town council for zoning. I didn't even know we had until early at night. But anyways, I think that this is an appropriate project under the Mr. Cod bylaw. It's a mixed-use development, which is defined in Section 243 definitions of the zoning bylaw as a development containing a mix of residential uses and non-residential uses. And certainly, this is. You have something akin to commercial accommodations, but you also have the cafe in there. So I think you've got the appropriate mixture. As far as the density, that's something we've been struggling with for a long time. But I, very early on in this process, when there was a motion made or requested by Mr. Lomond that we accept the site plan review with the planning board, I made a motion that we do. It didn't pass. But in any event, I still think that the bylaw says that there are certain uses allowed in Mr. Cod by right. And one of them is a mixed-use development. And something that's allowed as of right, again, by definition, because that phrase is defined in the zoning bylaw, says it's a development without the need for a special permit or any other discretionary zoning approval. So, you know, I know you've gone to work with the town staff to come up with a project that satisfies the concerns of this board. I think that's very commendable. Appreciate it very much. But I think, anyways, I'm prepared to go forward with this project tonight, based upon your presentation and the way I read the bylaw.
Jerry?
I can't add anything to Mr. Duffy's comments. I want to ask, will you make the affordable units that they have the fresh right, a right of first refusal for parking? Or is it first come, first served?
I mean, there's enough parking to serve all the units.
But some of them offsite?
It's abutting, it's abutting, this property. It's next to it. There'll be an entrance to the parking lot.
I defer to, that was not a major issue. And the 60 days is for all use, just the affordable?
So the SHI units will be year-round rentals?
Oh, that's right.
The Mr. Cod units will be year-round rentals. The short-term workforce housing will be a minimum of 60 days.
Okay. And I think that's it. I do take exception to one board member chastising other board members as to how they're going to vote. We each have our right to consider, based on the information in front of us. Thank you.
Can I address something Mr. Duffy said?
Certainly.
Frank, how can you logically come up with your assessment when, on the one hand, well, let's call it the left side of the building, the planning board went so far as to determine that 20 units per acre was adequate? And to totally dismiss that and allow on, let's just say, for the right side of the building, that you can have 950 units per acre? Where is the logic in that?
Can, I'm sorry.
That's a legitimate question.
The legitimate question is a legitimate question. However, I think it's appropriate...
Let's have a legitimate answer.
Then, we're going to do that during board discussion. I'd like to get through any additional questions of the applicant, public comment. And town council is here this evening, if it's all right with you, Ms. Flauer. I'd like town council to weigh in about the issue. Initially, one of my concerns was, I by no means am an ends justify the means sort of guy. That's just anarchy before the law. My hang-up was to making sure that whatever was proposed, and I had issue with the, initially with the building commissioner's determination, I'd like to hear from town council just briefly, if she's agreeable to it, as to whether or not what is proposed is acceptable and permissible, a permissible use. We will get back to your question, though. More discussion.
Good evening, members of the CBA Mara O'Keefe Town Council. So you're looking for feedback whether this is an acceptable use as requested?
Yes.
I agree that it is. I will tell you, as I always do, if this ever does become subject to a challenge, I can never tell you what a judge is going to say. But looking at the project, I do believe that this passes muster. And in talking with, that comment is based on the conversations that I've had with all town staff.
And is it fair to presume or infer that the planning department, as well as the building commissioner, weighed in on this proposal?
They have. And in fact, I believe that I communicated an affirmance of exactly that point from the building commissioner.
And the planner?
He is of the same mind. Absolutely.
Any other...
Without a legal opinion, we can't release it, but we've talked about it.
So that's actually not a legal opinion, because you didn't actually ask me for it. So it doesn't qualify as, as a legal opinion or subject to... I want all of my legal, like attorney-client privilege information protected. This does not, it's not subject to the attorney-client privilege. You may share, that is public.
Thank you.
So they reapplied with planning under the new bylaw, and they changed their conditions?
So that, they will, after, if this special permit is granted, they will be required to go back to the planning board.
So did you get approval from planning already if they haven't come back?
No, I didn't say that the planning board has approved anything. The town planner has looked at the proposed project and believes that it has merit.
You said planning board, sorry.
Nope, that's okay.
So the same planning board that limited us, well, excuse me, expanded from 6 units to an acre to 20 units per acre is also happy with 950 plus 20 units per acre.
Well, I don't...
I don't see where any logic is applied there whatsoever.
I haven't...
I know this is an extremely political issue, and the pressure is all over. But I think this is, why have any bylaws at all when we can turn them into a sieve for strain and vegetables? It's ridiculous.
Is that the question you'd like me to answer?
Yeah, I would.
I don't, I don't know, because we're, we're a government of people, and we're just trying to do this together. We're trying to create affordable housing.
So why don't we throw this book right out the window?
That's a really good question, Mr. Fenner.
Do you have a good answer?
If you have any other...
Might, perhaps.
I don't. If you would have any questions about this project, I'd be happy to answer them, though.
Any other board member have any specific questions for town council?
Would you consider this extremely political or just controversial?
All politics are controversial. And besides that, I refrain from answering any further on that matter.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you very much.
Ms. Flauer, what's the timeline with the planning board, then, if this is approved this evening?
So we have, we have an approved decision for something that is very similar in nature to what we're proposing before you tonight. We will have to modify the site plan review decision. We don't anticipate there to be any issue with that. We intend, the issue we are up against, which is our issue and not the board's issue, and I fully am cognizant of that, is that we have a funding deadline coming up in very early June. We can submit with the site plan decision that we have and still modify that after the fact, but we need a decision from this board by that time.
Any follow-up questions from the board?
Not for me.
Not for me.
Public comment? Ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Amy Rader. I live at 59 Nye Road. I have a very clear view of this project from my bedroom. I'm very concerned about the design of the parking area. That used to be a lot of hundreds of trees that was cleared because that, the lighting, the noise, you know, it's going to have like 20-something cars, or restaurant workers, and workers who may get off at midnight. It's very quiet there right now, and I'd like to remain that way. I've been there for 28 years. My mother was born on that street in 1929. So I realize my neighborhood is changing drastically, thanks to the Fay property and that situation there. But I'm very concerned about parking lot layout and downlighting. And also, the person who's going to be at the desk for 24/7, will I be able to have access to their phone number? So I can call them at 1:00 in the morning when someone's out in the parking lot? It's just, you know, Thalmouth is a party town in the summer. And, you know, I've been there and done that, and I, you know, now I'm a quiet, private person. And I'd like to have a phone number of someone I can call, other than the police, if there's going to be a noise issue with all these people. You know, I, I'm not for or against, I'm just very curious about how this is going to look and how it's going to impact my quiet, sleeping life. So, thank you.
My name is Lynn Shad. I'm a member of town meeting and also a member of the Thalmouth Climate Action Network. And I came here in support of Mr. Galasso's project. And I'd like to give you a few reasons why that would be. So I represent the Thalmouth Climate Action Network. We are a climate advocacy group. We submitted a letter to the Thalmouth Enterprise. It's in this last Friday's edition and supported the project. And we think this is a great idea. I think there's a lot of people that are a great idea, think it's a great idea. The issue that was just brought up by this woman, I hope can also be addressed because it's valid. Or not valid, but it's something that should be addressed. Not only does this project address the vital need for critically needed affordable workforce housing, it is thoughtful and environmentally conscious. The key points on this are, it repurposes a pre-existing structure. The building is on a public transportation system. It is centrally located, so many workers can readily access their places of employment, perhaps without the need of public, of any kind of transportation. And as previously mentioned, there's ride-sharing options and ride-reduction as well. Also, the renovations are on the order all of our public and private buildings need to address in order to reduce our carbon emissions to meet state mandates. This will help our coastal community to address the increasing effects of climate change as we see with more increasing storms and sea level rise. These renovations, they include energy efficiency appliances, in particular, removing the gas-powered appliances and replacing them with electric. And to meet this increased energy need, solar panels will be added as well. This project is long overdue for many of the reasons cited, and it's a project that needs to move forward. Mr. Galasso is a respected developer exercising great civic responsibility in our community, trying to address very critical challenges. Thank you very much.
I didn't think it was on.
It doesn't amplify, it picks it up for FCTVs.
Last meeting, your mics didn't work either. That makes it very difficult for the audience to hear the discussion you have amongst yourselves and also for their knowledge. Anyway, I'm Ralph Herbst, Precinct 8. I'm here and speak in favor of this development. I looked up the mixed residential overlay district bylaw today. And I'd like to, I'm quite sure that you've read it many times, but I'd like to just review a few things here for your benefit and for the benefit of the audience. Under the purpose and intent of this overlay district, the purpose and the intent, which is what you are debating amongst yourselves. On Item 1B, it says, "Increasing the incentive to developers by increasing residential density." Increasing residential density beyond what's normally accepted. It also says on 1C, they, you want, the purpose is for greater diversity of housing. So he's proposing quite diverse of housing opportunities for people living on this site. Item D, "To mitigate traffic congestion by promoting housing proximate to the compatible commercial uses." How could it be any better than where it is now? They can walk to almost anything they need. It's "to provide all stages of life and levels of income." So I think that's understood. These are not commercial rates. These are set because it's a 40B, isn't it? No, it's not a 40B, excuse me. Okay. I apologize for that. And then the last item is "to enable creation of livable, walkable..." Walkable! It's right here in the bylaw, the word "walkable." Neighborhoods in the town's business district, which this is in a business district. So when you consider these, these items under the purpose of this bylaw, you have the cannon fodder to do what is necessary to make this happen. Prior to this woman who spoke for me, and with all due respect, you are the first person in town that I have heard or read who is quasi-opposed to this particular project. If you read the editorials in the paper, if you read the letters to the editor, you talk to anybody in this town, this town wants this to go forward. And you, the zoning board of appeals, have the authority and the option to make it happen. I urge you to consider what the town wants. The town. We want affordable housing and a variety of it. And it's not only on the sewer, but it's on, it's got transportation, and it's walkable to downtown area. It's exactly what this town needs. Thank you very much.
If people just maybe want to queue up, that way we can keep public comment moving along.
Hi, my name is Tony Green. I live on Clinton Ave. I've been there for 33 years. Been coming here as a summer kid, starting in 19...
Thank you very much.
People just maybe want to queue up. That way, we can keep public comment moving along.
Hi. My name is Tony Green. I live on Clinton Ave. I've been there for 33 years. Been coming here as a summer kid, starting in 1964. 11 years non-consecutive as a year-round resident. I served on the advisory committee for Mr. Cod. It's not perfect, but this is the right intent of a mix of uses in town. I think sometimes it's difficult, but for a board to make a decision in the best interest of the town. And I think this two-and-a-half to three-story building renovated and remaining, set back far off of Main Street, is their better choice than some other alternative that might appear that would be larger and closer to the street. I hope you approve it.
Michael Taylor, District 6. I don't have too much to say except that I approve of this project. I think it's a perfect use for a building that we've all seen. It's sitting on the street doing absolutely nothing right now, and it could be doing something for the community. And I know some people have issues with parking or lights in the parking lot or getting contact information. I don't think these are showstoppers. I think we can solve these issues, but there's other issues that we can't solve, and that's doing nothing with this building right now. Thank you.
My name is Eleanor Ling, and just to disclose, I am a member of the Thalmouth Energy Committee, and I'm also a member of the Thalmouth Climate Action Network, but tonight I am speaking as an individual. Some of you may know that I support this project strongly, and I have submitted a letter to the editor. I think it was in April. But anyway, I didn't prepare to speak tonight because my colleagues and my colleague just spoke before me, Lynn, and she said the Thalmouth Climate Action Network has a really, really detailed LTE to the enterprise explaining why we support this project. So, I'm not going to repeat all the details, but tonight I would like to stress that, yeah, let's not let perfect be the enemy of the good because as many of my fellow community members have commented, we really, really need this project. And specifically, I can tell you my personal experience. I have to change private... I have to change my primary care, healthcare provider about four times in the last five years, and some of those primary healthcare provider, they agreed to start their work here in Thalmouth, and then after several months later, a couple months later, I was told that, well, they decided they're going to move elsewhere, or they decided not to accept the job. So, I think we really, really have a critical issues here, housing issues, not just for healthcare providers, but for many other, you know, workers, scientists, and business persons, and business workers and so forth. So, I really want to urge you to support this project and approve this project. Thank you very much.
My name is Kevin Murphy. I live in Thalmouth, have most of my adult life. This is a current building, and the current building is going to be used for something. I happen to be the guy that put these two groups together. The owner of the... The current owner of this property has been very patient for the last two years to move through this permitting process. There's an old saying that you be careful what you wish for. It cost him $20,000 a month to carry this property between taxes, insurances, and, you know, heat upkeep. That being said, he's constantly being contacted by the governor's office to put migrant housing in this property, and he's leaving a lot of money on the table because he owns businesses in this town that he would like to see this project move forward with and provide some housing for his staff. Just leave it at that. Thank you so much.
My name is Bill Edes. Thank you very much. I'm a butler directly across from this location. I think housing should be very important, which it is, and I'm glad that they're trying to do this, but I think it's absolutely in the wrong place. I made a suggestion that we have a dilapidated police station, that we should consider moving to this location. That would suffice for the cadets, policemen, the firemen to stay there and erect another housing authority where the police station is. You have no idea, me getting out of my office every day, it takes me about sometimes a half hour. I got to wait. The traffic is so congested there now. You have that other building of 104 units coming up. You have the other one you just approved across from Betsy's Diner. A lot of people don't know, there's a lot of housing behind the Walgreens, there's housing behind Dunkin' Donuts, there's housing across the street from Dunkin' Donuts, there's a lot of low-income housing. I'm all for it. This is not the place to do it. You don't have the proper parking. You're saying 67 cars, 67 cars, and if you had the restaurant full, it's 91 cars. But I honestly believe, I get common sense, is most people have a companion, and they keep saying public transportation. What type of public transportation? It's a joke. The reality is, there's no public transportation. You have one B bus, that's it. And I'm just totally against this project, as I have been from day one, due to the fact that you don't have the property to accommodate all these cars. And I think that Mark was right, that we should wait and let this go back to the town, let the town board members understand what's going on. And they said he did a traffic study. I don't know if they did it. They must have did it at midnight because come by my store. I offered you all, I offered the planning board, come sit in my office. I look out the window, it's like this, it's congested. And this is... If you say never, that's because you're not downtown. I apologize, but I'm there every single day. Come on down. I invite you to come in. No problem. Thank you.
Hello, Sarah Marolla, Thalmouth Heights. I have a couple of things I want to say. The first is in regard to whether this is the place to do it. I think we've already talked about the walkability options, that there is some public transportation, there is a bus that goes by that my friends have taken. There is cars for use that get around the parking issue, which they've already worked on, and also the sewer. So, as someone who's very interested in pollution, it's already built in the searing system. That's very important to me, that we're not creating new septic tanks. I also wanted to touch on the 60-day limit. So, even for people who live here year-round, like me, who have to switch between summer and winter housing, the first year was here. When I was here, I ran into a situation where I couldn't find winter housing until November, but I had to move out of my lease in August. So, that 60 window would have been very helpful then.
Anyone else wish to make a public comment?
Hi, Heda Vedersharen, Glenwood Avenue, and I'm going to read something on behalf of somebody who was not able to be here tonight, Max Yon, who lives in Precinct 3. They say, "I want to speak in support of this proposal for two reasons. The immense public interest that would be served through this proposal. However, I think you've heard a great deal about that, so I would like to speak more to a different point. The ZBA is acting on this capacity as a quasi-judicial body. It is bound by statute and precedent. This proposal is seeking approval as zones under Mr. Cod. That bylaw was enacted recently by Town Meeting to accomplish this exact objective, to allow for people in creative solutions, flexible and creative solutions that serve multiple public interests. That is clear in the purpose and history of that bylaw. Members of this board have discussed multiple times their frustration with ambiguity, or worse, policy foundation of the bylaw. That is not this board's job. This board interprets policy, it does not make it. The zoning bylaws rightfully give this board broad discretion in sub circumstances, but that is not the scenario. The bylaws have given this board a standard for review for mixed usage zones. The board should take that into consideration with the combined effects of each use on the property and determine whether soon combination is in harmony with the general intent of this bylaw." And the answer is clearly yes.
Briefly, sir? Sure.
I just wanted... Last time I was told that it's going to be month-to-month, they'll share a bathroom for one person, and it's low-income, $2,200 a month. Is that accurate?
Going to have to defer to the applicant as to what the proposed rents are going to be, or what 140% of the AMI would be.
I mean, the motto of Thalmouth is, it was, isn't Thalmouth nice? Well, this is way congested here, and for those of us doubt me, come down and you'll see for yourself. This is not a good place for it.
Any other comments?
Mr. Morse, if I could just speak to the concerns of Ms. Rader. Would be happy to provide a fence around the parking area, certainly towards the residential areas, and to be conditioned for any lighting to be downlighting in that area. And Ms. Rader, if you want to see me after the hearing, I can make sure that I get you in touch with Mr. Galasso so that you have his contact information moving forward.
Anything else? Any follow-up questions to Mr. Clawer based on... What are the proposed rents?
So, the SHI are governed by... The SHI units are governed by the... There's eight units that are 80%, and then the other 22 units would be between 16 and 140, and I believe the SHI units are then therefore limited to 30% of take-home. So, it's got... Basically, the monitoring agency is going to determine what the rents are for those based on... Those are going to go through a lottery process for each of them.
What is the current dollar amount for 140% of AMI?
How about just the AMI? And we can do the math ourselves.
I know, I just don't know what that...
What's the average? What's the AMI?
One person AMI is $85,900.
And that's for... Excuse me, Mr. Chair. That's for municipal county.
That's municipal county AMI, and that's a... It goes by family size, so one person, two person, three person.
No, we had questions about whether it was Boston or maybe it's other. This is county AMI.
That's $105,000 a year.
We've laid our cards on the table. I think we should have a little board discussion at this point. Tony?
Do you want to close?
No, keep it open in case we have some questions.
Are we having a discussion? We're having a discussion.
You know, you said it as well. Without the rule of law, there's nothing but chaos. You can say it quite that way. I still don't know what the rule of law is to allow this. There've been comments made about the town wants affordable housing, and certainly we do. It's needed, but what the town wants gets voted at town meeting, and this has not been voted at town meeting. From what I understand, that there's going to be some changes. It didn't make it to the spring hearing, our town meeting. I have to ask a question. What happens to this project if the ZBA does not vote this? Where does it go? Does it end? Or do they just have to restart it?
You can ask the applicant in a minute, but...
All right. That's going to be a question that I would like to have. Can I ask now?
Sure.
I suspect this project is dead. If this board votes no, I suspect this project is dead in the water.
You know, this is a, what appears to be a bifurcated process. On the one side is a planning board that's already approved more units than Mr. Cod allows, but that was a planning board decision. I have no idea why they made that decision, but there's not much we can do about that, I think. But I think Mr. Finneran is right. There are more units than allowed by Mr. Cod. I don't know why. What I don't understand either is if this board approves this, we don't write conditions. For instance, would we write conditions that requires dark sky lighting? Someone mentioned it as downlighting. It's really dark sky lighting, is what it is. Well, the fence, isn't that part of planning board? So, what are we actually... How do we condition something like this? And I'm not sure, there's an answer yet, but I just... I don't understand how, if the law does not exist, how this gets approved. However, our town council is willing to stand behind this, which means that even though she mentioned this, she doesn't know what a judge would do with this, it has to be legally defensible. I have to believe that when she, our town council, says that she agrees with this, that she has a legally defensible argument she can make if someone appeals this. So, I'm not sure. I'm not voting on this one. You're very fortunate. But I... Those are my concerns right now.
Suzanne?
My concerns are tough. I really don't want the restaurant in there, at least that big a restaurant, and now I understand there has to be a restaurant, but we did tangle with 18 seats at one point, and now we're back up to 24. Brings more cars, and we know that the people across the street in the Faye Building are probably going to walk over there, and at least there won't be any cars, but that will be a traffic nightmare walking across the street. I also have a problem that we... I've been asking since day one, and Kevin can confirm, for my letter for mass housing saying this is a go, and nothing yet. I understand we need affordable housing. We're doing 300 unit. We've been working hard. We do these all the time. We've approved many. As the butler said, they're all over that area, many affordable housing units in that area. And I just... I'm also helping with that new Mr. Cod bylaw with the working group, and it totally needs work, this bylaw, and I'm just not ready to vote for it until it's done properly.
So, two points. One, mass housing won't issue a letter to that effect. However, I think that that can be addressed by a condition in the decision.
I was promised a letter.
But we can't get it. We cannot. We have tried. We cannot get that letter. They will not issue something like that. But a condition in the decision saying that all 30 Mr. Cod units must qualify for the SHI addresses that concern.
And if that doesn't happen, it kills the project.
Kills the project. And, you know, I understand that the bylaw needs work. Lots of sections of the bylaw need to work.
Yes.
But this is the bylaw that we have, and I've heard this board say many times that they have to go by what the bylaw says, and this is what the bylaw says.
Then it's such you can't have that many units.
The bylaw says 20 units an acre.
Sure, and that's what we have.
Oh, you don't.
The... Anything else? Nope. Done. This is obviously a case of first impression. The concerns, as I previously indicated to the applicant, surround making sure that the 25% affordable units remain affordable, that they're going to be included in the SHI, that they're available. I recognize that because these are rental units, all 30 will end up getting added to the SHI. So, I would suggest that, given that the applicant has indicated that they're willing to provide either recorded or recordable instruments to ensure that those units remain affordable and that they're agreeable to a third-party monitor, that the rentals are going to be 60-plus days, and we can free to condition longer if need be, I think we can condition the issue or satisfactorily condition the issue of affordability. That is addressed. My first major hangup, just to make sure that affordability remains affordability. affordability, and that the purpose of why this is, why we're going to allow greater density is maintained in perpetuity. The second issue is whether or not our town council is prepared to weigh in and defend the suggestion that what is proposed closely resembles a previous use. We have a building that's been there. It's been sitting. It's got a lot of, you know, 120-bed nursing homes. So, there's no proposal to expand the footprint. There's no proposal to expand parking, parking lot. There is a, I believe, a lease agreement, a place for 24 additional parking spots off-site that's been provided to the board. So, I guess a lot of, I mean, traffic is traffic on Main Street. I recognize the concerns of the abutters, but it's checking off a lot of boxes, I think, that are desirable. So, I've indicated that, given that it's a pre-existing building, we're not raising a building and putting something up significantly larger, I'm going to defer to the representations of town council that the, the final hang-up I had was that initially there was pushback from both the planner, as well as the building commissioner, and they have now indicated through meetings with town council that they, they can get behind this proposal. So, I'm going to suggest, my feeling is that this is approvable, but there are going to be significant conditions to ensure that issues raised are going to be addressed. Mark.
Okay. Go back to the question I asked you, Frank. I want a, I would like a cogent explanation. Answer, yeah. Significant, defensible. As to why the planning board would, on one side, Mr. Cott, allow 20 units per acre, and then leave it completely open to have, actually, the number is 945 units per acre. It makes absolutely no sense. Why did they limit Mr. Cott at all?
Well, the way you state it, it makes no sense. I agree. Now, if you look at the bylaw, under 247.5D, use is allowed by right. A mixed-use development is allowed by right under the zoning bylaw, and when it's allowed by right, it means it doesn't require a special permit from this body. Now, the one thing you have to notice is when it says mixed-use development, there is no density requirement. And this is a mixed-use development. The density requirement is under residential multifamily dwelling units, and that is, and there is a density requirement of 20 units per 400 square feet there. But this is not that kind of development. This is a mixed-use development, which has no density requirement. Now, the reason for that is when you have a mixed-use development, you have to consider the non-residential component. We don't know how big that is. It may be 90% of it. It may be 10% of it. But until you know that, you can't determine what an appropriate number of residential units is. That's why there's no density there. We're a mixed-use development, and there's no density requirement.
They required 20 units.
No, they did not. They did not.
Mr. Cott required 20 units up from six.
No, they didn't. It's, that's a residential unit development. This is not that.
It's a Mr. Cott project, Frank. I mean, this is.
It's the whole thing, Mark, not just what you're.
I've read the whole thing, and I mean, I'm fairly logical, and this was never the intent. Town meeting would not have passed something that allows this density. Absolutely wouldn't have. This is a contrivance.
It's what, it's what we're dealing with. It's what it is.
It's the bylaw.
Anything else you want to add, Frank?
Well, I, again, I appreciate the effort that was put into this by the applicant and the town council, the town planner, and the building commissioner, and so forth. And I repeat my, my previous comment that I believe this project is allowed by right, but I know the whole board doesn't, and we didn't proceed under that assumption, but that's fine. I think we, in the end, got where we wanted to be, or at least some people got us to where we want to be. This project is an appropriate reuse of an existing building that is screaming for a new use, and a new use that will be beneficial to the town. And I, I think that they have come up with the, with a proposal that we can approve, and we can condition it appropriately, and we can go forward.
I'd just like to say that Mr. Cott, again, I'm going to say it a thousand more times, they expanded from six units per acre to 20. This could quite easily be a nice Mr. Cott project with simply creating two-bedroom units underneath the existing parameters. This is, I'm sorry, it's a contrivance. Mixed use is intended to be residential and a commercial, not residential, commercial, and more residential.
Well, I don't see what the difference is. Residential.
Really? The difference is, the difference between 20 units an acre and 900. That's the difference.
But there's, there's no density on a mixed-use development. How can you say residential, mixed use, and residential? That, that makes no sense. It's mixed use and.
Excellent. Well, then, why did they put the 20 in there in the first place?
Because that's, that they're counting for solely residential unit development, which this is not.
Jerry.
I'm in favor of the project. I'd like, just for the audience's clarification, that the town charter in Powza, not town meeting. Town meeting, I don't know if anybody can speak for town meeting. Town meeting could change the charter, but our authority is vested in the town charter.
Our authority is in the bylaws.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I have the floor.
You do, Jerry.
Town council, the planning board, I am assuming the planning board, the planner and the building commissioner has weighed in, and I think town council has given us, I guess, an open letter as to a way forward. So, I think it's just a matter of conditioning, and I agree, it could be, it should be conditioned appropriately, but I think this is clearly approvable.
How would the board like to proceed?
I'm making a motion to close.
Motion to close by Mr. Duffy. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Tamis. All those in favor of closing, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? We are closed. No more testimony will be taken. Before we deliberatively make a finding, is there any request by the applicant at this point?
No, we're closed.
I'm prepared to make a motion to approve.
We're closed.
Not asking for a comment, I'm just asking, we've always given people opportunity to withdraw, and that's, that was the purpose of my request.
We sink or we swim tonight.
Okay. How would the board like to proceed?
Make a motion to approve.
With conditions?
I'll make a motion to approve the application to redevelop the 125, 120-bed nursing home at 45, 545 Main Street in Falmouth for mixed-use development under the Mr. Cott bylaw with 30 rental units, one-bedroom and studio units to be included in the town subsidized housing inventory and, under Mr. Cott, and 37 single-room occupancy units for short-term workforce housing pursuant to section 245.1C of the Falmouth zoning bylaw, and a 24-seat café. The SRO units will be leased for periods of not less than 60 days and not less than one year, and at least eight of the SHI units will be rented to eligible households with income not exceeding 80% of AMI, and the other units will be rented to households with income not exceeding 140% of AMI. Also, the finding under section 245.1C that the use resembles another use in the zoning bylaw, namely, commercial accommodations.
I can second that if the administrator got all that down. We could all listen to the tape again.
Findings? Sorry, Noreen, did you want to?
Do we want to highlight some findings? It's 8 o'clock. We've all been here, and I think maybe we could get some, our conditions. I'm not sure, not findings.
We need, we need both findings and conditions.
Yes, correct. I stand corrected.
So.
You doing findings?
Yes, that's, I'm just going to start putting in, just for transparency, just citing the previous planning board decision, because it has a lot of the relevant information. So, parcel in question is a 67,892-square-foot lot located in the business redevelopment and general resident zoning districts. It's in the Falmouth Inner Harbor Coastal Pond Overlay District and in the mixed residential, commercial overlay district, Mr. Cott. Currently, on lot is a 52,686-square-foot structure previously used as the Royal Falmouth Nursing and Rehabilitation Center. There exists a 73-space asphalt parking lot with a one-way circulation system in place. Applicant has submitted, they've entered into a parking lease agreement dated March 28, 2024, with Kevin Property Holdings LLC, allowing the applicant to install for use of residence, staff, and management at 545 Main Street. A 24-seat parking lot that abuts 545 Main Street access from the onsite parking area, and that the lease agreement is for a term of five years. The redevelopment of what's contemplated includes converting the 52,686-square-foot structure into mixed use, consisting of 30 rental dwelling units of one-bedroom, 37 single occupancy room, or SRO, units, and a 24-seat café. Project will be permitted as a mixed-use development under the Mr. Cott Overlay District. 25% of the rental dwelling units will be affordable and remain affordable in perpetuity. Testimony is that the applicant will obtain an outside third-party monitor to ensure that The, what is proposed with the one-bedroom units is inconsistent with the housing production, recently approved housing production plan, given that they are one-bedroom units. The board can all agree that there is a significant shortage of affordable rental units in the town of Falmouth and in southeastern Massachusetts. Testimony is that the short-term SR units will be for minimum of 60 days. Project is currently served by municipal sewer. There will be no increase in nitrogen. The amount of effluent will actually be reduced by what is proposed and what was previously Property is currently serviced by the Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority. Testimony is that there will be parking spots for ride-share, as well as bicycle, bicycle Testimony from the applicant is that they will do what is necessary to make sure that the Executive Office of Housing and the Local Communities, make sure that the affordable units will remain on this town's SHI subsidized housing inventory. Testimony is the applicant will be happy to provide lighting, dark-skies compliant lighting in both the parking lot and around the property.
Since that is an old application, you may want to reference the workforce.
Yep. Yeah, the applicant was actually for workforce.
The lease of the parking lot.
He did that?
I did. I got that out of the record.
This is from April, before the workforce.
Testimony was that they will peer back before the planning board to update site plan.
I think there were findings or comments about the traffic.
Concern, yeah, there's been concern from abutters about both traffic, as well as light, noise, and so on.
Fair enough.
Concern expressed about the density. Other findings at this point? Noreen?
You did mention town council's letter, or is that?
Yeah, actually, the town council has indicated through testimony this evening that they believe that what is the revised plan before the board this evening is permissible, and that both the building commissioner and the planner are in support.
They also stated they're going to have 24-hour staffing.
Yep. Testimony is that, and that will be conditioned, that they would have a employee 24 hours a day on hand. We can condition restricting access need be. Additional findings, Frank?
You've got, I'm kind of checking off as you go forward. I think you've got it. Oh, no, no subleases?
That'll be a condition, but yes.
Rules for quiet enjoyment.
That'll be conditioned. I think we've got necessary findings. Anything else you want to add? Tony?
I think.
Conditions?
For plan. The revised plan.
Yep. Per plans, applicant must retain a third-party monitor to ensure compliance with affordability provisions for both workforce, as well as affordable units.
Mr. Chair, I can.
We're, we're.
Hearing is closed.
If I could ask to open it, because that was something I addressed specifically in my testimony.
The hearing's closed.
Well, we could, excuse me, we could reopen the hearing, but what they testified to is they didn't get the, I should say, they didn't get a response from the state agency, even though they were going to try to get that response. That's, that's what I.
Said they were going to give us a response.
Well, they can't get something that a state.
Do we want to reopen and see what Mr. Clower has to say?
I think that might be appropriate, but I'm only one.
What question are we going to ask him?
He looks like he wants to clarify something.
I do, very much.
Make a motion?
I make a motion to allow Mr. Clower to ask a, or to issue a clarifying statement.
Is there a second? I second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed?
No.
Three to two. Hearing is reopened.
Thank you. In testimony and presentation, I specifically stated that there will be third-party monitoring for the 30 SHI units. However, given the nature of the short-term rentals and the target audience, including J-1 students, it's incredibly difficult to have them monitored by a third-party agency. We would handle that in-house through the application process and provide an annual report to the zoning board.
Okay.
Make a motion to close.
Make a motion to close. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, conditions. Management or security personnel on duty at 545 24 hours a day. Building will be restricted by electronic key card system for the residents.
Downlighting, I'm sorry.
Yes, I see, I mentioned that.
Applicant shall contract with qualified monitoring agency approved by the planning board, as provided in bylaw section 247.5E1E, to ensure that the dwelling units will continue to qualify for the SHI. Copy of an annual compliance audit report required by Mass Housing Partnership or other funding agencies shall submitted to the Board of Appeals each year. SRO units shall be rented for a period of not less than 60 days and for less than one year, provided that extension term after a rental period of 60 days may be for less than 30 days. SR units may not be sublet, but may be leased by Falmouth businesses for employee occupancy only. SR units are particularly intended for temporary workers, researchers, students, and workers relocating to Falmouth needing temporary accommodations. SRO shall not be advertised or marketed for verification rentals to tourists and without discriminating on any unlawful basis. Management shall request information about the employment or student status of prospective occupants.
Can we, can we say the preference will be given to Falmouth residents? Not mandatory, but preference.
Federal fair housing, you run a fair of that. I think we can, I think the intent is pretty clear. Putting a condition in could be problematic.
Planning board approval?
It's federal money. You can't.
Yes, exactly.
Planning board approval?
Yep. Must obtain site plan approval or revised approval from the planning board, comply with all conditions. So, why don't we just really does approval of the special permit, condition on applicant obtaining modification of planning board approval of August 15, 2023, site plan review decision. So, to include workforce housing, as stated on the property. Otherwise, in compliance with the planning board approval of August 15, 2023, site plan review, or any amendments or modification. Applicant, landlord or applicant will develop reasonable rules for all occupants to ensure appropriate conduct and use, quiet enjoyment use for both neighbors, as well as other occupants of the building. If any unit will not have a parking spot. If any unit will not have a parking spot, the lease will conspicuously indicate that and the applicant will be advised, in the event of insufficiency of parking spots, to be distributed equitably both to.
How will that be enforced?
In terms of the.
That one lease person is not allowed to have a parking spot, how will that be enforced?
It's a condition, so if there was a complaint, it would basically come as a zoning complaint.
Go to the building commissioner.
What's that?
Goes to the building commissioner.
What if it's on a Saturday?
Have to wait till Monday.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
What happens if it's on a Saturday?
It still goes to the building commissioner.
Leave a voicemail.
My concern with the condition is that, I mean, there are plenty of buildings or places in cities that there's no parking onsite and you just don't have one. I just want to make sure that if someone's coming in and there isn't a parking spot that comes with this rental, you know that before you sign on the line, so you don't show up with a car, now you're scrambling to find a place to park.
Cities like that don't have parking regulations, we do. And how in the world is the building commissioner going to be able to deal with 67 parking spaces? It's going to be impossible.
And I don't know, but I think if parking is an issue, we do have a police department. There are other places where, especially over the weekend, as Frank said, it's a phone call in. If it's one night, it's one night, but at least the complaint will have been registered. And if there's 300 complaints, then we'll have an indication of non-compliance. If there's one complaint out of a year, I'm not saying that's acceptable.
Testimony from the applicant was that they have sufficient parking for everyone to park. I just want this in there that in the event that, for whatever reason, there was either no guest parking or there's simply not, it gets to the point where there's not enough parking.
No, I was concerned about.
A prospective applicant knows, hey, this rental does not have parking.
How we enforce that? And we're not an enforcement board.
I understand that. It's a condition, though, that we're just going to require them to indicate clearly on a lease that this particular rental doesn't have.
Thank you.
It's not enforceable, but I understand what you're saying.
Well, how about?
Can we do hours of bop on the restaurant?
That's a licensing issue I would suggest with the Board of Selectment and the planning board.
Could we stick with the parking for a minute?
Sure.
We allowed this because they have a lease for five years for, what is it, 24 parking spaces? 25?
Twenty.
34.
24 spots. And the right, first right to lease the parking area thereafter.
Yeah. So, what happens after five years if they lose their lease? Does he decrease the amount of rental units? What do we do? We're.
This is why we're insisting.
We're in a pickle here.
This is why I would insist that going forward, that if they have to, if they don't have sufficient parking, that an applicant needs to understand that going in when they file a rental application.
What about the?
You can also condition it, they have the right of first refusal to go for another five years, condition it to that, that they accept that they take the next five years.
What if they don't give it to them because they don't?
No, they have the right, the lease says that they have the first right of refusal.
But what if the conditions of the lease are violated?
The condition of our permit would be violated.
I don't think we can condition someone to require them to release something. They've indicated that they have it for five years.
They have the right to do it, what if they don't take it up?
I think it's fair for us to review it if it's not, if the lease is not renewed.
That's fair.
So it comes back in front of them?
Come back in front of the board to review.
And what action would we take?
How can we? Can't be proactive, but we're going to.
Cut down on the number of units they can lease.
Yep. All right. Applicant will provide recorded or recordable legal documents restricting 25% of the rental dwelling units in perpetuity to be affordable.
Are we fencing and lighting that leased area or?
We can condition that.
But if it's a lease, can we condition something that's leased?
Because the permit covers it.
So then we need to have fencing and lighting for safety.
But if you want to, yeah.
Yeah, I think.
Put it on, right? What do you want?
I think that's what he agreed to.
Fencing and lighting, just safety for people getting out of their cars.
And the lease requires a separation, a fence separation, I believe, some kind of separation anyway.
All right. Conditions?
Just for safety, lighting.
Well, I disagree, I think it's a perfectly legitimate issue.
Doning administrator can accept the planning board's letter upon receipt.
Yep. Lighting will be dark sky compliant, downward facing. Other conditions?
Well, we'll get a chance to review it after we see it.
See what?
All these conditions.
Yeah, you have to make comments.
Well, we could approve it, subject to review, or we could say.
No, they got, they got a time deadline.
Okay, all right, so then, Noreen, you get everything down?
Of course.
Of course, I'm sorry to.
Question, no, no, no.
All right, any additional findings or conditions that people want to add to the record?
I think we have to open to keep it.
We can.
Not testimony, it's.
Since this is a special permit, there are, there are, I'm going to recommend that you make a finding about how you came to the decision that you're going to grant the special permit. I'd like to actually ask co-counsel Tony Riley to come up and explain that to you and explain what that finding will look like.
So this is open legal advice?
Yes.
Yeah, it's an open meeting.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Tony Riley, I'm an attorney helping Ms. O'Keefe. So, when the, the overall purpose of this hearing is the special permit under section 51C to determine that workforce housing or short-term workforce housing closely resembles commercial accommodation. I think it would be helpful to make a finding as to why you think those two uses closely resemble each other. In my opinion, it's insufficient just to say that they do. You have to explain why. And that's all I have.
I think that's helpful.
So I guess on that lines, I would suggest that the previous use of a nursing home generally is considered short-term occupancy or use of the particular building. What is proposed is very much in keeping some of that.
That seems appropriate.
It's the cousin of it, it's not identical by any stretch of the imagination, but it's a closely related cousin, so to speak.
Commercial accommodation is a, is in itself a short-term.
Yep.
Tendency, much shorter than this one, but it's for somebody to rent a room for a specific purpose for a specific time. And the only difference really we have is that the time is different. We're talking a minimum of 60 days up to a year. And in terms of the coming and going and the impact on the neighborhood, I think it would be the same.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Very, Tony.
I don't understand that, Mr. Duffy, because if you're in a nursing home, you're stuck in a bed.
I'm not talking about a nursing home, I'm talking about commercial accommodation.
Well, we're supposed to be comparing them.
We're comparing it to commercial accommodation, not to the nursing home.
So what's the difference?
I've said what I had to say on that.
The nursing home, you vacate in an ambulance.
Any additional findings?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. What was the find, I'm not sure with all this, what was the finding with regard to similarities?
Don't be yourself, Frank.
In a commercial accommodation, people rent the room for a short term. It happens to be a night or two nights or maybe a week, but they, there's a turnover, people come and go and they rent for a specific purpose. They're here on vacation or they're here for work or whatever. The, the commercial accommodation, the rooms here are going to be rented for the same purpose. People are either going to be working here or they're, actually, they're going to be working here, but it's again, it's a short term. The only difference is the length of the short term. Our minimum is 60 days, the maximum is a year. But I'm saying that the impact on the neighborhood doesn't change. It doesn't matter if you have, in fact, it might even be better because you have less turnover.
I'm going to put a supplemental finding, too. I mean, there's clear legislative intent since 2020 to encourage redevelopment of properties. Specifically, as I indicated at the beginning of the hearing, chapter 358 of the Acts of 2020, they reduce zoning decisions for redevelopment from a super majority of requiring four yeses to a simple majority of three. There have been significant changes in zoning, requiring high-density zoning districts along the MBTA, so I think there's a clear legislative intent coming from Beacon Hill that they are pushing for these sort of high-density developments.
Are you going to, are you going to cite that chapter?
Yes, I'll cite the clear legislative intent for encouraging redevelopment in chapter 358 of the Acts of 2020.
But isn't there a stipulation on that? It has to be more than 15 miles of the terrain or something like that?
The MBTA development one does, yes, for those districts, but it does, not applicable here, but I'm just, it's showing that clearly the legislature wants to see high-density housing projects being put into communities that are near, in this case, public transportation. I think that the intent of the legislature is to streamline and encourage this sort of redevelopment.
Mr. Chair.
Chair.
In addition to Mr. Duffy's explanation, are you still putting, which I think is somewhat comparable, that nursing homes generally are short-term?
Sometimes longer than others, but.
I mean, I think it's a general comparison that.
Yeah, I, that would be originally what my suggested finding would be.
Well, so long as we have it down there to help clarify advice we've got, in addition to Frank's, Mr. Duffy's.
Any additional findings or conditions? All right, let's have a vote. Mr. Potamus?
Vote to approve with conditions.
Frank?
Approve with the conditions as, as mentioned.
Mark?
No.
I'm a yes based on the findings and conditions proposed. Suzanne?
No.
So, as indicated pursuant to chapter 358 of the Acts of 2020, this is required a simple majority, the vote is three to two to approve. Any agreed party may appeal the decision of the zoning board of appeal, this provided for in chapter 48, section 17.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, this has been probably the longest special permit hearing I've been a part of. I want to thank you all, I want to thank town staff again for all of their hard work and we appreciate your time and consideration on this project.
We still have a few things left, we are still in session. We will be voting on the minutes of April 11, 2024. We're done, sir. Done, sir, the hearing is closed. Ladies and gentlemen, we are still in session. I would ask you to please take your conversations out in the hallway. Thank you very much. We will be tabling the minutes of May 9 and May 16, as everyone had opportunity to review the minutes of April 11 and May the 2. Are there any amendments, changes, or corrections to the minutes that need to be made? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April 11 and May 2, May 2, 2024 as published. Is there a second? Suzanne, second. Any discussion in the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed? That's a vote, those minutes are approved. Number two on open meeting, zoning administrator updates.
So our office continues to be busy. We have several administrative approvals that we've issued. First was 247 Oyster Pond Road. They added a conforming front landing and stairs, expanded their living room and family room to the north, and the kitchen into a former three-season room, so not more non-conforming. 356 Palmer Ave, Seafood Sam's Restaurant are adding six additional outdoor picnic tables to their current tables. They have sufficient parking and board health approval. 12 Johnson Street, expanding their kitchen to the rear and as part of that, removing their shed and rinse station and portion of the southwest dwelling, removing a bulkhead. So they're actually reducing their total lot coverage to below 25% to be conforming. And then 12 Beach Plum Path, they're partitioning their basement. They are adding a escape well for an emergency egress for the.
They're adding a, I'm sorry.
It's a escape well, it's an emergency.
Escape well, oh, thank you.
Right, egress for your basement.
Fire escape.
Like a bulkhead?
No, it's, it's a window that you can climb out of.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so.
Have to Google that, I didn't know that, okay.
So they are adding no bedrooms in the basement, they have a door only to a storage and mechanical space.
Questions for the administrator?
Good job. Comment.
Number three, board discussion. Board updates. So I can't comment on the specifics of the meeting because it's not noticed, I will merely report to the board that Frank and I did have a meeting with the town administrator as well as the chairman and the liaison to the ZBA concerning what was proposed from Saxon and we'll be happy to give you the results of that meeting at the next hearing.
Next week.
Apologize if it didn't get properly noticed.
It's next week.
Next week, so.
You don't have to be a genius to figure it out.
Again, I don't want to get into comment about it, but yes. Future agenda items.
Wait, Noreen, might I have a board update, did you?
I don't think there's much more. I did receive a phone call today from an attorney who is indicating that they're going to submit a request for another cell tower on Quaker Road, which likely will also get referred to Cape Cod Commission, so just to give you a heads up about that and if I, as I get more details, we'll let you know.
Under future agenda items, I don't think we're going to have necessarily time to do it on May 30, but perhaps the next meeting after that discussing the board, if we could get it onto the agenda, a discussion about, under the CMRs governing 40Bs, as to whether or not we want to, which is our prerogative, essentially stay the opening of additional 40Bs until our workload is a little bit more tame.
She's been trying.
I understand, but I think we should add that to open meeting and have a discussion about that as to what the, the board's position and feeling is. Just briefly for the information to the board or anyone who's watching or listening, because we have over 300 units, there is a provision in the CMRs that allows us to, we're not saying no to an applicant, we're just saying, no, you're going to wait or we're not going to open your hearing, we're going to stay the opening of the hearing until a later date. So, Jerry?
I forgot to bring it up, but I think, and maybe we'll table that, I think I had asked Noreen to explain what the, the housing approval authority letter meant to us as a zoning board. I guess we can discuss that.
That would be a board, I look at that as a board update. If you want to.
So, just for the board's information, we have reached out to the state to get clarification about the ability to exercise a stay. Apparently, it's relatively unusual, I'm told, that a community would, you have multiple prongs that you have to meet here. You have to have a minimum of three current applications, which you do. They have to total over 300 units, they do. So there is a provision within the state's regulations that allows the board to stay future submissions for hearing because the understanding is that with the caseload that you have, that you don't necessarily have the capacity to add hearings for more 40B units. So we have an inquiry out to the state and our town council's looking at it as well. I would expect to have something for you in writing about that.
So why don't we add that to the next regular scheduled meeting of the zoning board, it'll be the, the first meeting in June for discussion of that.
Yeah, I think as soon as I have something in writing, I can add that in.
Very good. Exhausts all items under open meeting. So our next regular, our next meeting will be May 30 at 6:00 PM at the Lawrence School, 113 Lake UF Falmouth, to here, 375. 113 Lake View Falmouth, to here 375 Sandwich Road. Is there a motion to adjourn? Or second? Thank everyone for their insight and their comments this evening, we are adjourned.